I'm working on it fully up and see. I have as good as it's looking forward to.
Yeah, we live in that like a disaster. You're so little. Here at the house. Very good.
My job.
Oh, you're hard.
That's the thing.
That's pretty certain. Stagnant. Yeah, pretty glad. Yeah. Now, yes, I obviously signed the law. But of course, there's a story about the long September. I said, I was afraid something has escaped some.
Yeah, there's a chemical.
Just I just construction mango. Me, maybe lumber. We're going to do our little. The locations here and there. Yeah. I'm there. Um, also without a lot of good. There are expensive slags. We can go. Yeah. Definitely. Gee, we're in the back heart. Every every year. I still got it. I'm here. Remember your baby. First, we just have two. And you know, that's actually used to hurt. That's me all. And those ones did this much. Yeah, I got two open doors. No, no, no. Where's again?
Um, I like to like. Bring that.
I have a big first that speaks in three and sound like it. It's and. Yeah. I come to one day. You can win this. And my way and they were trying to restore. Yes, our envy that got. I don't know when they're. I can use six days. It was easy. So just keep the blow. It's gonna be good. We've issued six master. She mean, I lived with three hours. That's the least of all. It's me.
Yeah. I'm similar. Poor husband. I mean, they're not. They're trying to.
Yeah.
This was. Oh, that's there was not very well.
I was trying. I was John's. I have the higher.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. But we're sort of had five mils. It's everything. If it does, why not? Sure. And if you want them there, tell us. Pass them through his home. Because I'm probably sad about up here. I'm sure she's got five days. I swear to me, it's starting to be serious. I'll find water.
He's in there.
Yeah. He sounds terrible. Your old wife. You know, we have whole.
Just not.
And you visit.
Oh, I told you that. Very busy now.
Yeah.
It's not true. You're out.
All of that. Not.
He said, two things that right now. Oh, right.
Well, somebody to run it out.
The next is gonna be gone. So I don't think he even sure. Yeah.
Five times. Oh, why didn't you? You so. Oh. He think it's. Oh. Yeah, do you just get it right around? He's like the last second of body or. Everyone there. You know what? That's that. That's this time. All the way. I thought the thing you do. Two, three, four. I'm trying. Be. Be. Okay. David. There you go. After. Yeah. That was a lot of. Right. You're looking at top. You should hear the. How things. We do. She kind of. But yeah. That's it. Careful. Look at. People.
All right. Let's all stand the recessed consternation of the city of Elsworth. The twenty second of August, twenty twenty two will begin. Let's all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America. Thank you, the Republic from which the fans is wanting issue under God into this globe with literacy and justice for all. Before we go to the consent agenda. Like to point out, we have our new city administrator here, Dustin Stanbaum. We're extremely pleased that he's here. I did ask John, should we clap for him? He said, no, he probably would be embarrassed. But I'd like to go ahead and my, I think, I think. There you. We're excited to have you and pleased you're here and ready to start a new chapter. So.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. Consent agenda, water and sewer termination requests.
I don't.
All right. No water and sewer termination requests. So that's the next part of our agenda. We have a piece called petitions and delegations where members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter related to city business not listed on this agenda. The comments that are discussed under petitions and delegation may or may not be acted upon in the council hearing. There is a five minute time limit. Please stand and we can recognize the mayor. You must take your name, whether you reside in Elsworth city limits. And we do have somebody who's called in and Craig Pinkel. Would you like to be the first?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I was just coming to talk a little about, you know, what I'm there at the crisis bar. Got that crisis or couple and what street is that?
Saint Clair.
Saint Clair. Uh, I doubt you've received any complaints because every time I've been there, everybody thanks me for keeping that clean. Because it was a mess of previous two years. So I just wanted to kind of show some pictures of, you know, kind of how big of a mess that was. And that was even after I cleaned stuff up a little bit there. I pretty much pulled a whole pickup load of trash and leaves and dug out all those. What were those? But stuff I didn't think needed to be there. I kept the sediments in there for the summer, which that's a succulent. So it's handled the the drive not being watered. Uh, okay. And yeah, just show the. Now what it looks like now. I've kept it sprayed. I dug out the day lilies a few weeks ago. So the plan here, I I'm getting this master government program kind of started. I got two people from Elsworth that are going to go through it. And we'll kind of have this as a project. Uh, and kind of keep maintain. We'll probably end up taking the sediments out. I'm going to try to meet with Jessica Almaka to get like a. Somebody that's better on design and placing plants than me. I usually just kind of stuff and go, but. Plan is to keep it more of a native plant area, pollinator area where I can then put like signs identifying what plants are. And we can have some educational piece to that. The one thing we might want to discuss down line is, well, one, I'll definitely need a key to access the water hydrant when we do plant in the spring. Because if we would have tried planting stuff this year and just relied on rain, everything would be dead. And then, as you can see, eventually, we're probably going to have to address those uh, railroad ties to down the road. And I don't know if we need like some sort of agreement on like what the city would cover on cost. Because I've just been, I've been using my own money on spring and I had to buy another jug of Roundup, which cost me forty bucks. So. I just, I use what I had at my house and just bought more when I needed it. But so that's, I just wanted to kind of keep you guys updated on what what I'm doing there and kind of the plans going forward.
Very good. The council have a problem with maybe having him submit his receipts to the city and be reversed.
That's fair. Yeah.
Certainly, my neighborhood will change. It's very nice.
Yeah. Every time I've done anything significant, people usually say I stopped and said.
We certainly appreciate it. And um, yeah, absolutely. Um, if they'll just bring them in and all will take care of.
Yeah. Absolutely. Like you said, when when you start getting into buying plants and that, that's where it costs. We'll, we'll sit. But hopefully, me and Jessica Almaka can get together and she said she's willing to start seeds and we start some plants too. And and help me out. Do.
Very good. You're so. She right.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. And whenever I need the key, who do I?
Water. Joe. Yeah. Give you a shout. Yeah.
There'll be more next spring.
Okay. Can you be the worst? All right.
That's why I got.
Appreciate it, Craig. Very good. Yeah. Uh, so anybody else like to serve these? Tammy.
Excuse me. I'm free. Um, and I do reside in Elsworth. Would you? So. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Dustin. Nice to meet you. Tammy McGee, I'm the executive director of the Elsworth Area Chamber of Commerce and also the chair of the newly formed Elsworth Cowtown Committee. First of all, I would like, I'm going to wear my chamber hat first and just thank the city of Elsworth and you council for your support of Elsworth Area Chamber of Commerce for so many years. Your annual distribution to our organization helps keep our doors open and our town vibrant. Your support of Cat Town Days, switching my hat, is also very much appreciated, both financially and with manpower. Um, I can't tell you the fact that the the Cowtown Days that was just this last weekend certainly would not have happened without City Detail, the inmate detail, um, Troy. Did. Um, good. So many people, right? That just helped mayors on our committee very decent for him. And I heard that you even got involved, Dustin, right off the bat. So I'm so glad. I hope you enjoy your Cowtown days.
I do. Very good. Thank you.
Um, as many of you know, and for Dustin's sake, just a quick background of Elsworth Cowtown. After the festival in two thousand seventeen, the working committee decided to no longer be active and told the city council that fact. Nothing was done. And in February or March of two thousand eighteen, I approached the chamber board to see if they would be willing to take it over, which they did. And we decided to do that. But in after last year's festival, it kind of in the fall, I believe it was October. That's what I put on here, October twenty one. My board decided that it was not, I didn't really meet the chambers' commission statement. So we took that to the city. The city also decided it really didn't fit into in with their mission statement, understandably. But um, I sort of let the march to just form a new committee because I believe it's important to celebrate our heritage. And um, we developed a new organization in which Melissa's actually working on our five oh one C three right now, just called Elsworth Cowtown. My request today is for the funds that were set aside in the two thousand twenty two budget. I understand that this request that I emailed was not received. I'm so sorry about that for whatever reason. It's probably in cyberspace somewhere, but I did add that on to the back of your paper that I just gave you. So we're equal that supplies to my request. Okay. Um, the other thing, though, that I really am most concerned about is storage. So for years, the Chamber had a little spot in the world in the old R R building. And we used that when we, when the renovations took place. Um, and we were thrilled about that. So we took as much stuff as we could out and we left a few things in that south garage area. Uh, Mr. Tambreak has told us that we have to have everything removed. Originally, we were told we could, we needed to remove our items from the little corner storage room, but not necessarily from the, from the other area. So we uh, moved what we could over there. Again, like I said, took the things that we couldn't. So I just am here to ask, as we are struggling with this new request on not having any of the items there, which include some panels that were the set for our background, uh, the shooting of Sheriff Whitney and the props that go with that. So there are schools that act as tables. There is a law that's built and just moved back and forth. And there was a piano that can be dispersed of. And um, there is a ticket booth and some chairs. I would like to just confirm that this request is actually from you as a council and that you're aware that we've been asked to remove all of these items. And if not, I ask permission to please leave the props and the panels where they were. I appreciate your taking time to listen to what I have to say. We're struggling to find somewhere for all of it. We already have had to remove and tarp the big Cowtown wagon, which goes many places and represents Cowtown for a lot of things. So thanks for your time and listening. I do have one more question, and that's specifically for um, council member Johnson over there. I I heard this question actually from this gentleman up here. He heard the question. You serve pulled pork at the Cowtown Festival? Question mark. Question mark. Just for fun, just giving you a hard time.
You may dress. You can. You have a good question you want to ask. Those are the rules. It's our best to leave. System.
So I can shred about a hundred fifty pounds of pork in under ten minutes.
Very slicing person.
I'm a part of the peanut.
Yeah. I think um, he, we put this on the agenda and vote on it, maybe for future to vote on whether we want to provide them with storage. Um, that probably is the way we to go. When we get the council back together, the next meeting or two, then we can bring it to a vote. And that's done. You know, there will be storage. That'll give Dustin a chance. Maybe you and Dustin could go out there and look at it. And um, he can get a spatial idea of what you're talking about.
Thank you.
You know.
I just like. Free dial said, I'm maybe very good for you.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Okay. So anybody else would like to have addition to delegations? A little bit of time. Okay. All right. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, I think.
I heard Michael.
So Kurt and Michael. Okay, John, did you want to address the council with an update?
Yes, sir. Dustin, you should tell a lot of you off to Kurt and Mike if you're not. That's better. Uh, welcome to our town, of course. That's just a couple of quick items because I heard that there's pretty full agendas. I keep everybody already late tonight. I just want to address the council on a couple of updates on our projects on the South Attention Basin project. As you're aware, we're working with Water Resources Solutions on the de-watering plan. And I did email the reports they generated to uh, to John and to Brittany. And I don't believe that was distributed. If not, make sure you all get it. So you can uh, present the study and certainly feel free to ask any questions. Uh, but the, in general, they they recommended fixed approach in the first phase uh, was to solve the appropriated drain pipe as we were discussing previously. Um, I'm excited that the pipe that was ordered by last week. It's laying out there in the rolls if you haven't seen it. Um, and if uh, if the city force are available, we'd like to get started that this week. To see that group more. And then just to follow up on the neighborhood multi-use path. We're talking about how we're working on spitting was ninety five percent. Okay, I called the officer plans that I didn't get done last week. And so now we're on to uh, we're waiting mode. Aren't good for K dot to review those planes, provide us comments. So once we get the comments, we'll update the plans, resubmit them uh, for for K dot to start preparing for letting. I then would also note that K dot moved the letting day. My, I think I discussed this last week. They moved letting into April. So it wasn't October or November or something like that. So it's been pushed to April twenty twenty three. Um, I mean, the way contractors are with their schedules and work load, they foresee that anybody would start it more April twenty twenty three anyway. So I'll see that as a feature setback and then a stretch. So now the main thing is uh, the easements acquired, but utilities are still on the way. So we're to get the traction started. And that's our next obstacle to get utilities out there. So then not that the V T hands us gas and buys three that take a while typically. They're all working on plans to get those utilities moved. Uh, Western, Western cooperate is the other one. And there's just a couple of guy wires, maybe one pole. They're always easy to get out there, pretty short notice to do things. They can talk about it for a year and a half on this project. So we're getting down to the final, final items to get such a good landing and construction next year. So yeah, entertain any questions. It's already. Pretty broad of the agenda of the notes that I provided.
Any questions for John? Clarification?
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll definitely be in touch with all the projects going on, including Dustin as much as you can and give him up speed. And this other stuff coming out.
Do that. Make sure you get your email address.
Yeah.
Set up to run.
Yes. Send it all. Maybe after the meeting.
Sure. Well, good. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Okay, so it's on a new business. We have several items to move on tonight. Uh, the first one is to authorize the publication of the notice appearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for the two thousand twenty three budget. Uh, that is agenda item report twenty two dash one zero four.
Uh, Mayor, Council, can you hear me all right?
As.
That's good. You can.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you all know, city staff, we've been working on the two thousand twenty three budget for the past several weeks. Uh, just a little history. On July eleventh, the city council approved sending the revenue neutral notice to the county clerk uh, with our intent to exceed the R and R. Um, the mill levy rate for the two thousand and three twenty three budget as provided by the county clerk, the R and R, it was seventy two point seven nine two mills. And so we set that evening, the maximum mill levy for the city of eighty two mills. So then for the next thirty days or so, we continue to work on the budget. Uh, on August sixteenth, last Thursday or last Tuesday, the council held a budget study session to review and discuss the proposed budget. Department heads were all in attendance as well. Um, so the budget that we presented that evening was eighty one point four, four, five mills, which was just under the maximum levy that we had at eighty two. And during the study session, the council did express its desire to lower that levy. And so we suggest, or the council suggested budget cuts that totaled right at fifty thousand dollars. It would bring our mill levy uh, to seventy seven point eight five three. And so the attached notice in the agenda um, sets the city's budget limits for two thousand and twenty three and the public hearing for the R and R uh, exceeding the R and R and also for the budget hearing. And those hearings are scheduled for July twelfth, twenty two at uh, five twenty five P M. Um, so in between time, the council still has the opportunity to work on the budget. However, um, just remember that you could note, you could not add to what we published. So you couldn't increase expenses, but you can can lower those. And so really tonight, uh, we're just asking you to approve the attached notice of hearing uh, to exceed the revenue neutral rate and the budget hearing. And those are combined hearings that'll happen on September the twelfth. Be happy to address any questions that any of you might have. I don't have anything, John. Okay. I I would also add this time, Mayor, since it's a little silent right now, is just for Dustin and Brittany to uh, make sure that Alan gets this publication as soon as possible. Um, it has to be published at least ten days prior to the uh, to the hearing.
Well, that. Yeah, we're communicating right now. Who's, who's got it? So we'll make sure. Yeah.
Fight my signals.
Yeah, I figured it out. Send it back. That's not your job. Very good. Um, sure. I think um, any questions about this? Yes, especially to say pretty much on the scene of it.
Mr. Mayor, the the notice of hearing to see the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing and direct staff proceed with required publication in the local newspaper.
Counselor Chris Field has made a motion to authorize publication of the notice appearing to see the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for the two thousand twenty three budget. Uh, Darcy has sent to that motion. Any discussion? Any questions? All right. During that halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Ooze. All right. Motion carries. We might have had to approve that. Very good.
Uh, Mayor, I I just want to add one other thing. And I'll, I'll send this to Dustin via email, but just uh, this year, and there's a resolution that we have to pass at that September twelfth meeting, which was the same, I believe, we did last year. But this year, it's a little bit new. It has a roll call vote requirement. And so I'll send that to Dustin and Brittany just to make sure we don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the K dot aviation grant agreement for replacement of the automated weather observance system. A was for the Elfrin Airport as agenda item report twenty two dash one zero three. And I think that um, John, do you have a little bit of background on this?
Yeah, let me, let me give a little bit of background. Uh, I believe Brad Waller is there this evening um, with the nation. Hi, good. And I have not met Brad in person, but he's been very helpful to me in the short time I was there through email and through a phone call. Just really, really helpful. But let me just give you a little background where we're at here. The city uh, applied for an aviation grant through K dot sometime in the latter part of two thousand twenty twenty one. Uh, the city was notified in May, early June, around the time I took over as administrator, interim administrator. The grant agreement was sent to me asking for the city's signature. And so it was my understanding at that time that the city had actually approved the grant agreement. Um, and apparently that assumption was wrong. I actually asked the mayor to sign this, uh, sign it at that time. And I remember him looking at me, well, what's this? I said, just sign it. It's an agreement for a grant that you've already approved. Well, I was mistaken, I believe, at that point in time. And uh, so we now have the grant um, in hand. And I've um, put this on the agenda tonight to make sure we're on the right page. I know uh, uh, Wayne is maybe there from, from the Dale. I'm sorry, Dale from the airport, just to confirm um, the city's interest in this uh, you know, A W O S uh, automated weather observing system grant. Um, the grant total is two hundred sixty nine thousand five hundred dollars. So it's a ninety ten match. So the city's match was uh, twenty six twenty six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Um, so. And for questions, and maybe Brad has some more information he can add to this to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's pretty good, John. Uh, Brad Waller from Venice, Manhattan. Dustin, I was just glad we had, we've been in the airport and working with the city for, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years. And I was just sort of realizing, if you count John, I think that's five city administrators now. So I tell them I'm like that. Man, we're better off. I don't want to be old yet, but I'm getting there. No, that's right. And we submit last year. We've been awarded the grant of select accord. It doesn't mean you have to use it. Um, you have a period of up to four years really to utilize it. So we're not saying that's been done right now. Um, you know, but you want to come catch you off guard or anything like that. But we do have the budget numbers now. Uh, when we put it in last year, um, with COVID and everything out there, it's not going. You know, it's always easy to get some money back for that. More, uh, we anticipate the uh, equipment to be about a hundred thousand. Um, we have um, we can do the same as our install new service. Jerry, Jerry Miller, who does, who has the city's contract to update or right on. Fix it, maintain it, that sort of thing. Uh, is eleven thousand and then finish this portion to their space of warrant analysis, the reporting on it's about seventeen five. So um, our estimates about one twenty five, somewhere in that ballpark is where we think it'd be ten percent of that's twelve thousand dollars. Uh, but the max match would be at twenty six. I mean, if anyone, I think what I'd say is if it went above right now, that one twenty five, we come back to the ministry, do that before we, we went further than that. So uh, basically, if you replace an old system that's really out of date, I know they all have my day likes to speak because he knows it and how. But I know it's impossible to get some parks or waiting on parks. It's a pain in the rear. Uh, but it's a really good investment, obviously, in the airport. Uh, Dale, you want to add to that?
Well, I can tell you that the last couple of times we had trouble with it, Jerry Miller, we had some old equipment. Kind of the South part is out, so it didn't work. Um, does anybody know what it is? And just, I don't understand it.
No.
Anyway, one of the answers is it reports the conditions of the airport. So it gives it ceiling, wind, uh, direction of velocity, a window says ceiling. So pilot coming to Elsworth to tune that in fifteen miles out, so they know what to expect when they get here. So pilot coming into Elfron, you can tune that in fifteen miles out, so they know what to expect when they get here. And that means especially not when they can't see windsong, which is really a very important piece for the airport.
And how, how old is he?
You know, I can answer that, it's, this only.
Eighteen years.
Even the computer that we use that puts it online, because it's available online, and you would be surprised if people here in town look at that, it's not working, we get a lot of phone calls. So that computer, last time it went down, we had trouble getting parts for it, so the whole system, you know, it. And like, it works, I mean, so it's all, and they're having trouble getting parts, but it's very important part of our facility.
It is interconnected with the national system, they can use it for day and all, and it tends for, uh, instrument flight approaches, uh, most notably for live flight. Uh, especially if it's a poor visibility evening or poor visibility, and want to make sure they're just a lot on their runway, we can spend money, but we could build a larger runway. And uh, this is probably a little mess, that's all, maintain and be cutting the, I'd say, so. Yeah, I'd like for approval to accept the grant, I guess, before with it, um. You know, if you want to wait on it a little bit, that's honestly bad, but I agree too, we do risk a bit of more money and more downtime, I don't know what cost of what happened, I mean, we do a lot.
John, I think your only question was about the budgeting of this.
Yeah, I did, you know, uh, I really hasn't, couldn't find any information as to what the plan was to fund our share, and, um. Uh, so I, I, you know, I just put in my report that, you know, we, we do have some money in the two oh twenty-two airport budget transfer to, uh, capital improvement fund. I don't know if that was identified for anything specific, but certainly we could use that and then have to, you know, find some additional money, um, to to cover it, but, uh. I I think the city's in position that they could, uh, finance it, but I'd probably have to let Dustin spend a little time on that, but, but I do, I do think you've got the money to. And I believe when they applied for it, they probably figured out a way to fund it, but maybe it just wasn't specified for me anywhere, so.
Mister Mayor, I, I'm, and I wanted to say earlier that. One of the reasons we even had that out, the state put in a big deal, I don't know how many years ago that was, trying to get these systems at every airport in Kansas. So there isn't, I don't know how many percent, because you did the majority, and because of that, and the state funded.
Yeah.
And that's why we.
And I do, I do believe it's an important component, um, of the airport operations, so hopefully the city can proceed with it as planned here.
How many more planes, do we have data on how many planes? You know, without a safer instrument, uh, approach versus not having, I mean, do you have any idea of the ballpark and?
We, we don't even have an instrument approach right now, we will have, we will have.
Sure.
We'll have future here.
Yeah. So we'll have some information and.
And on six, six, a life flight, that's the first thing I did was I checked for airworms, it is very important, and you know, not to be overly dramatic, but it's, if it's one person. But yeah, that's important, and you know, I don't want to throw that out there, but you know what I'm saying?
And the other thing I didn't mention, the way to do it, the system, and we're doing it now, if we have something at the airport that's different, like now, the way we exit it. We can by voice add that to that transmission. So that's very helpful, something kind of like the way we have to exit now, and put that on there, in fact. Uh, Life Watch heard that the other day, and kind of was changing the plans a little bit, but, um, because we can't always put everything into movements. So that is the ability to let us know what's going on.
And the one, the one thing I love this brother, this piece of brother, is it is located on north, and I, it's on Big Street, they're kind of located by, it's on that West Royal Airport. Uh, I think the desire that we have a thousand foot clear space around it, just to make sure nobody builds a house next to it, interrupts, you know, structures can mess with wind and thunder. Um, so we may get a little discussion, um, as we plan out some of this airport stuff, laying out positions, Eastman, potentially, um, we've worked with them over the past. It's one of those where we talk about, like, giving airspace, there's sort of a requirement, they're doing there now, it's just kind of a long-term security, I guess, so, we might wrap that into this if needed.
Well, I could be estimated, Matt, we should be.
So, uh, Mister Mayor, uh, we approved the grant agreement between the city and K dot aviation, press A W O S improvement project, the total estimated cost of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five.
So, um, is it two hundred and sixty or twenty-six cents?
Then the total cost would be, yeah, and our ten percent. So as we bring in, we get the quote from the manufacturer, and Jerry's not going to, do we need to come back here and get approval for signatures, or are we just staying here? Okay, we'll come back to you at some point, feature them with all that information, anyway, yeah, just one server player. Yeah, okay.
Mister Mayor, I'll second that.
Uh, Counselor Scriscio has made a motion to approve the K dot aviation grant agreement for replacement of the A W O S system. Uh, Counselor Renard has said to that motion, is there any discussion? Any clarification? Hearing done, all's in favor, say aye. Oppose? All right, the motion carries, the A W O S, uh, the K dot aviation grant for the A W O S system has been approved.
Mayor, just a few more minutes, I'd like to just update real quick, we got to, I haven't been there for a while, and also, uh, I passed out four, four different project updates. First, the third one we done, the first one is simply the runway and, and John kind of already worked, we'll work together with John, and work with them for many years up here, but. Um, basically, anticipated construction completion September twenty-third and twenty-three. Uh, so about a month or so from now, we have grown down about six point nine million dollars towards the eight point two million dollars total grant. Um, I think, hopefully, most of you remember that is a hundred percent paid for by FAA, so we're still staying there comfortably. And and say that if you're unexpected out of pocket, we're not out of the woods yet, but, uh, I hope. To beer champagne, maybe one of those days, and we'll all celebrate in the runway for free. Uh, but we're about eighty-three point seven, eighty-three hundred percent complete towards that right now, all payments done, working really right now, under drains, clean outs, the head walls, the simple stuff of the infrastructure. Electrical wallboard, wiring, lighting, uh, pavement markings, we know really all, we have a little, almost substantial complete. Uh, we anticipate doing an ASB survey and flight check probably in October, maybe punch list final completion in about first of November. Just kind of ballparking that, and then that grant closeout documentation in February or so, and I think we're with Brittany, John, make great help with work with withdrawals, and maybe, you know, some to speed there. Um, any questions, it's been a huge project for the community, uh, I think lots of people are going to, it's turning out great, we're pretty excited about it, I know the airport guys are. Can't wait for it to get done, for sure, um, any questions that I can help answer?
Could I, with that shirt, when, when you, you say completion here, are you, are you including the item?
The damn one, uh. I think substantial completion will be to give pay them.
That's not part, I mean, that's not part of this, though, pretty good.
The only reason I hesitate is because I know we need to do some work and do some, uh, seating, and we can't control that. Yeah, some groundwork, that's, that's part of, that should be, yes, that will be part of substantial, I know I know, we'll be seating, so probably get us to decide, we're going to open and cross, and we'll get standing grass to desire. Real quick, the second project is a rotating beacon. That is a project that began last year, and we have as FAA awarded project, ninety percent, I'm not hoping to not tell you that you don't already know here, but just a couple of dates. Um, I, I copied over substantial completion twenty-three, that's what we're actually doing. Uh, but this project costs about a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, it's ninety percent, first by the cities, um, to space, space about seventeen thousand seven hundred. We have around about thirty-one thousands a day, so about ninety-eight percent of the project. Um, the beacon was purchased already, it's sitting out at the airport, waiting for the contractor. Um, what it is, is a tip-down beacon, I put a picture in the bottom half for you, but that's a, the, the rolling gate right on top, it's like, there's a runway here, or airport there. It's a tip-down, because that way it's kind of climbing a ladder fifty foot in the air, that you can kind of grab it, push it down, and work on his BP. Um, the old one's on the old hangar, it's scheduled for demolition at some point, and I didn't, Dale put it up, twenty-five, right over there, yes. It's mounted on a old windmill base, and it's, but anyway, so that is going to be nice addition to the airport, and it is used at FAA funds. Uh, we anticipate the poll, the poll coming in February twenty-three, probably then can track that up in the spring or so, it's a pretty minimal project, and just want to get to speed. And then the last one is the very back page, and I just threw seconds, I just wanted to keep you up to speed. Uh, we've done a lot of the airport, and no, we haven't, and it feels like we haven't, yeah, but the years we've been there, maybe next time will come, I'll race it before and after, but when we started. We had an old runway, an old taxi, everything was all, as of now, everything's in really good shape, basically, all the papers new, the only is not a taxi line. Um, we have that up there, that made the project for expansion. Um, every year, the city gets a hundred fifty thousand dollars entitlement from FAA, and you can bank it up to four years, or six hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is a ninety-ten match, so it requires about sixty thousand dollars, I say we've been doing a lot of work, as we have, runway's been free. This was a K dot project, we have about six hundred thousand dollars in the bank, quote unquote, to user roots. I'm not encouraging you this year, I know we're going to need just a little change, I'm already long, I said, just kind of sit tight right now. But next year, about this time, coming back, we're going to look at a project, either April's over the planning, or the airport order on April, or taxiway. Um, for about six hundred thousand, and we'll use a match, I may be coming to you, and you may get an email from K dot aviation in the next several months of, hey, you have some expiring entitlement funds. That's just, I don't know, the, the money left over from four years ago, that we're just not going to use. Just got another airport in the community, yeah, that's what I want to point out, with the bipartisan infrastructure. Bill that passed the federal government, what, three, four months ago, or more, maybe now, um, you are also getting, it leaves another hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for five hundred percent in addition to. So we're basically doubling your entitlement funds, same rules, same everything, ninety-two. Um, the only difference is, the only thing about it is you can't just kind of throw a river and match the projects, you have to separate, because the government just doesn't often use. So we have about one point five million dollars over the next five years, and basically, user roots and funds, ten percent match, so a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Keep that in mind when you're budgeting, so we wouldn't come here and be happy to answer any more questions, you should go, not asking for it today, but want to basically put that out there, if we're going to capitalize on the branch, we want to do that. That's all I have, I can answer every question.
All right, so. I think, Mister Mayor, it's good, yes, for that, I, I just want to say one more thing. You know, the city councils, back, this one, and back, really need to be commended, and I don't think the new, you knew one especially, realized, and I don't know how many years ago it was when we started these projects. But that runway, when I first started, oh, when we first set up the advisory board, it was a, well, I thought one way that he wrote, that's how that works. Now we forgot this, I think, the city needs to be commended for that.
Oh, definitely, that's, that's really nice, so when you say mow, you're talking grass is grown, so you're mowing over.
White rubber.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's usually the side of games, or something, so, I know that's not just. Uh, the next item on our, uh, agenda is the resolution of support for moderate income housing, that's a agenda item. Report twenty-two dash one zero six. And I've got this document right here. Uh, this is a resolution supporting the development of certain housing within the city of Elfron, whereas the city, the county of Elfron responding to the request for proposal for Kansas moderate income housing funds. To be submitted to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, state housing trust funds. Uh, both housing development, assist a minimum of one duplex in the city of Elfron, okay? The unit will be targeted to households between sixty to hundred fifty percent of HUD state non-municipal area median income. Uh, the development will be new construction, the administration of M I H funds will be carried out by the county of Elfron, and the Elfron County Economic Development. And the construction development carried out by Jumer Construction. Uh, so this is in the new area, uh, over towards the hospital, where there already are duplexes, correct, John?
Yes, uh, Mayor, that's exactly correct, yeah. And the city applied for these M I H funds in two nineteen, so this is just in continuation of that effort there, so.
It's no obligation on our, or just supporting them.
At this time, there's no obligation on the city's part, right? And, and I, I would say, because Wayne, the question you ask is an important one. That I did have a conversation, a brief conversation about the city's willingness to commit to, uh, a purchase or a partial share in the purchase of the lot, but that is not, uh. Not an official request or anything like that, um, so I just don't want you to be surprised if that, that would come about, I would still recommend that you approve the resolution, because it may. Get resolved itself as time goes on.
Who definitely didn't buy a lot of lots, one bought them once, but. Well, Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution, the support for the moderate income housing grant. Resolution two-two dash zero eight, two-two made.
Mister Scriscio has made a motion to approve the resolution to support moderate income housing. Uh, Counselor Johnson has said to that motion, is there any discussion, any concerns about this? All right, hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, that has been approved. All right, the next item on the agenda is what you were referring to, Wayne, of course, is the, the large item here is the automated metering infrastructure project. Um, and I believe we've got some guests here, John, uh, to, to discuss that with us.
Yes, uh, let me just, uh, make a few comments, and then I think Jim Jackson is, is in the audience, as well as, uh, our own Joe, so hopefully they're both there. Um, but, you know, the AMI project, um, as you probably know by now, has had some significant changes in direction from the plan that was approved back in April of twenty-one. You know, the plan that you approved in April of twenty-one was to install the, uh, AM, uh, AMI, uh, modules, uh, program on existing meters. And phase in the replacement of existing water meters over a period of time. And somewhere along the line, um, it was, it was determined that the, uh, modules would not fit the meters that the city had. And so, uh, I had, I've had brief conversations with both utility service company and city staff as to how, uh, the meters were mistakenly identified, and. Really don't have any clear, clear answer to you right now, but it appears now that the only alternative is to. Replace the eleven hundred current water meters with meters that will fit the purchased, uh, MTIs. And certainly not what, this was not what was expected, I believe, when the city approved the AMI project back in April of twenty-one. Um, but I think the council has been informed about this situation in past, uh, council meetings. And so the original project budget, from the records I had, had the, uh, MTUs and accessories were at four hundred thousand dollars. And there was funding that was identified for those, I provided that in the memo, and then the replacement of the eleven hundred water meters, just estimated to cost an additional. Four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that takes the total project budget at eight hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, you know, I wanted to say that I know, uh, this component of this project wasn't expected at this time. Um, it's not ideal, but certainly, uh, you know, it, it places the, the city in a really good position going forward as far as the, uh, infrastructure or water meters and readers. Um, I think the city's fortunate, um, that they had set aside funds, says, specified for phase one. And that the idea was to use the total amount of ARPA money, the, the city received to fund, uh, this portion of the project. And so with that, um, you know, I don't know that I have a whole lot, I had a. It took me a long time to find out some of the history of this and, and dig, dig into where we ended up, but, uh, I know Joe's there, he can talk more about it as well as Jim, and so. With that, I think we probably ought to open it up for any discussion, um, and then before we deal with the, uh, motion to approve, uh, this scope of work, which is number four, and I did provide in the agenda packet. Uh, I think there's total of four scopes of work from the start of this project, scope four is really what we're focused on tonight, that's the, uh, purchase of the water meters.
Charles want to provide some other information, you have.
I think you guys have really been informed when we go along with that. There isn't any other dual data that can gather information. John's been digging back as to how this uh, project was supposed to be funded, there was some. The lies we did crawl all the way through this, without them coming along, but they, Kevin Angelo worked together to fly and funding to complete the rest of that project. As far as new information on that is from the last tax of the United States, and nothing really changed in here for either approval or.
So where is the rest of the money coming from?
The, what was the question, that where's the money coming from?
Where's the rest of the money coming from, John?
Okay, the first, the the first uh, phase, the MTU installation that the city's already signed contracts for. Um, in that cover memo I wrote, um, it it talks about the two hundred or two seventeen temp note. Water sewer improvement fund and the water equipment fund, and so that was right at, it's three hundred ninety five thousand, so right at four hundred thousand dollars. That was what I came up with from some memorandums that I found in uh, from Rusty uh, sometime back, um. And then the next phase, you know, we're talking the water meter purchase, um, not only includes purchase of meters, but also installation. Um, those were coming from ARPA funds, which is the money that I've been told that uh, the city has not spent. And that was uh, totaling four hundred and twenty seven thousand, I think there was some money. Out of that spent on some training for uh, some of the department heads, but that was a a minute amount. So those would be the two sources of funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think originally the plan was, as I mentioned, was that the city would, you know, once we installed the new. Uh, modules that uh, that we replace a hundred meters a year. You know, for the next several years and and that would be something that our crews, city crews would do on their own. And obviously, that isn't going to work with eleven hundred meters, I'm not sure what the timetable is or how long it would take to install those. But the plan with this uh, work uh, order for is uh, not only for the meters, but for installation as well.
Ethan John, not to get ahead of ourselves, but is this not the reason why we didn't release ARPA funds to private businesses that request funding? And that, as you did your research, because this is going to come up in a future meeting, this is why we didn't really allow that application for those funds because of this project, correct?
Yes, I remember uh, when I first was there at a meeting, there was some discussion um, among the council. I can't remember what we were talking about, that ARPA phones, um, maybe it was based on this uh, private uh, business request for ARPA funds. That we'd earmarked, uh, or that you had earmarked these ARPA funds uh, for that uh, project. And I think that that decision to earmark those probably came. Came along after we discovered, the city discovered this situation, uh, which probably goes back several months. Um, I couldn't tell you exactly when, but I think goes back several months when um, we identified that, Joe may know that date better. But from that day forward, I think there was a thought that you would identify uh, the ARPA funds for this project.
Who've been waiting on this project a long time, if we do approve this, when is it gonna?
They they said the meters would be about twelve to twelve to sixteen weeks, um, you know, delivery time. And that is uh, at at first of July, uh, when I, when I got the pricing, uh, we got that locked in for for sixty days. Uh, pricing on everything, just usually every sort of days they keep changing it, but we talked to the meter company, they they gave sixty. So you know, go through, through, through the first week of September anyway. Uh, you know, with that current lock price, but they, at the time, they told us be twelve to sixteen weeks. Uh, we do have, you know, all the, all the MTUs for that, and we'll say kind of where, where I think all the confusion. Happened with this was, uh, the original scope of work was, you know, the city was gonna do all the installs. Uh, and in in the RFP, it said that all meters were in two hundred meters. Uh, you know, which is a certain type of MTU. Joe and all these guys actually did an inventory, you know, for meter lids, uh, I don't know if you remember those on board and came back on meter lids. Because yes, I think you had like seventeen different sizes, the meter lids, you know, in in your system. Uh, so we're, we're doing some, you know, through the lids and some other deposits. Uh, Joe got gathered all that information, you know, all we were really looking at at that time was the meter size, you know, meter lid size. Well, come to find out, the information he provided is showing us those were pulse, you know, majority of yours were pulse meters. Uh, that MTU will not work with the pulse meter, so it was, you know, we can, we can buy all pulse meters. That are pulse MTUs that we need, you know, get those switched out. But then. Down, down the road, every time you go to change a meter, you're gonna have to replace the meter and install a new MTU that that meets the encoder feature and not the pulse meter. Uh, so that's why we we kind of stopped and started looking at saying, you know, you guys probably gonna save, you know, three to four hundred thousand. Replacing them all now, then replacing, you know, for the next ten years, uh, just because you don't, you won't have to buy that MTU also. If if that makes, that makes sense, so, uh, you know, again, again, original RFP said encoders, that's what we were looking at. Joe's guys, you know, Joe provided us the information, we just, we didn't look at it because we just kept assuming everything's encoders. Uh, we didn't know, we weren't really looking at the information he gave us, it was on the, on the lid size, so. Uh, you know, almost say, well, we're gonna take away into part of that, uh, you know, because we didn't, we didn't look at that information. We just looked at what, what we were meaning at the time, so.
So is there anything on a pulse meter down the road that might require a different type of meter?
The encoder is the new, the pulser is the older style. Uh, so, so, and as top of it, and and it's, it's hard to combine a a pulse meter. Uh, so, because that's one of my questions to the manufacturers, whatever we go ahead and, you know. Get its pulse MTUs and then later on we change it to the pulse meter, you know? And it was, you're gonna have to buy an encoder, so it's, it's anything you change from here on out, if you don't do that, it's. Basically double cost of the MTUs, so.
And how long do these meters last? We replace them all now? Ideal, I mean.
Fifteen years, you know, on this, so. And that's uh, according to A W W A, the American Waterworks Association, that's pretty much the standard for meters is is fifteen. Uh, they say fifteen to twenty meters, you work there and everything for fifteen on this, so.
Doesn't. Correct me if my understanding is wrong, I'm new to this municipality, but not new to giving water meters. So the water meter is the one that doesn't need to be replaced, but needs to be replaced, what's the battery life on your MTUs?
Seventeen, fifteen years.
So the battery life, uh, for the MT, for the uh, MTUs, what about the meters?
We're guaranteeing everything fifteen years.
So both?
Uh-huh, meters, meters and batteries here. Uh, and and we'll, we'll be monitoring it, uh, so you know, if a battery starts going low. Uh, we'll, we'll let Joe's guys know and and they can go out, we'll do a trade in how to change those out. That way you don't ever have one that just quits, you you, we're gonna let you know ahead of time. Uh, you know, that that battery is is getting low, uh, we'll have your extra batteries.
Even if those batteries do go bad, the riggers still need to change to read water, just as it's. Right, it's just you won't be able to get the signal, you have to do the.
But yeah, the, everything, everything, battery and meter, we're, we're guaranteeing it for fifteen. In full, full warranty on it, so.
Any other questions? I don't see a project completion date on where. The project completion date would be based on approval and when we give the orders or. The the day that you say we can go with this. It could be twelve to sixteen weeks depending on manufacturer completion date or some equipment.
But it's twelve to sixteen weeks just to get the parts, right, so then you're just gonna be on top of. More time on top of that, right?
That we isolation time on top of that. Winding down crews are gonna be kind of poorly able. We have several who even do this all, but eventually we'll try to have crew that actually take care of each. This is what they call a season winding down, is they try to do this with the conditions available and we'll do it all very long.
But it can't be done during the winter.
And then we'll try to do it all in thirty days, you know, once they get it, that way, that way with with the billing. There, there's a half trying to do it this way, half the other, it's once the final reads are in, they they start doing masks.
Possible would be, we read meters on the ten and by new on the ten, there. Start your poll right behind me with the meter here. The all encoders, if we need interaction here, if we go the other route, we have to send part of those encoders back. To give a cover, readers that you need and fully done with an additional cost. There won't be additional costs. There would be some weight, and I'm gonna guess that the pulse into that is gonna be slower to produce dead. But Joe, still, I don't know, base batch, which is something that we fight on a regular basis, it's tough to train new guys on fourteen different systems. And Angela absolutely despises it, makes sure you all be very, very excited. Something that should take her a couple of days, it sometimes takes ten depending on how, how bad things are. Anything we can free up for her in the office could be more of a treatment, correct? Without the old staff, I will go read a year, he's gonna benefit, sure, the office a lot, yeah. I do want to make sure that we make a motion, that we make a contingent that does an extra tax and make sure those funds are actually available. We spent a lot of those funds on the armor, and uh, so make sure that we're not double committing those funds. Somewhere. John, have you seen any of these funds in the line items that are still here or if it is there?
You know, that's a good, uh, a good. What was the question, what have I seen, the line items there?
Yeah, have you seen the cash sitting somewhere?
Yeah, that, I, I have not, I, I, the water improvement fund, water equipment fund, the CIP, that's all there, the temp note, um. I've. I can't say for certain, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I would hope, uh, you know, that the temp notes were were issued, those projects in mind, that it would still be there. And I don't, you know, I don't think Brittany probably knows that, um, do you, Brittany?
Not on the tent, no, I know the ARPA funds, Legion book up on Friday, I think. So all of those are.
That covers the first part. We still have babies, guys, for any of this.
Yeah, because I don't, yeah, I don't believe the city's made any payments yet.
Yeah, don't worry, Shager, they have several hundred thousand dollars.
So. What we're relying. With brand, it'd be, the the battery doesn't be bad, yeah. That is, that's one we can get to the best overall price reduction.
They are elemental, not, you know, if we talk about going impossible, we have to walk with that the entire time, so. We're not gonna do any type of positively, whatsoever, we. We're asked a lot of years.
I don't think so, I never just made a contention.
Then we make it. Eight hundred thousand, then we make it a little bit more than that, I mean, that in total in like eight, we are five hundred and twenty two thousand dollars.
Is this the purchase, the meters to uh, make the encoders compatible? With the new system?
Well, this would only be the four hundred.
Hundred thousand?
That'd be four fifteen, hearing.
And you want to do sport.
Prove the first stage of this, which is four hundred thousand, something. Okay, this is only secondary to purchase. So, sure, block all, we're gonna purchase them sooner than later anyways.
Right, but then I'm still, where do we come up with the other? Thirty stop, well, no, the other thirty some.
I think we're already committed, I mean, we're already kind of the funds for the three ninety five. There's already, ten, no, all those are already.
Right, then we look at another four hundred fifty, which is more than what we have in the ARPA. Am I right? Because the ARPA says there's four hundred and twenty seven, I think that's what. So then where we come up with the other remaining?
The, probably the other logical source, I'd like Dustin probably look into that, but would be the uh, water and sewer improvement fund. And that's a fund where the city set aside and we continue to transfer money into that for rainy day, emergency type projects. And I wished I was there, I would have, uh. I would have my uh, information there to talk to you about the balances and those funds. It's in my budget file, laying on that big, nice table in the office there, and I wished I could get it right now, but I can't, so. But I, I think Dustin could probably confirm that over the next few days and. You know, if something happens, we can always come back and readdress it, but uh, the the additional money you're talking about. I have no doubt that would be there.
Jimmy, remember, we're all top of your head, what the coughing for this entire thing would be? For installation of the lot, and I have to get it different components over. But what I'm going with is that fourteen sixteen weeks, we're gonna buy these eventually, it's just a matter of how we get it funded. If we improve the purchase of these, get these things to getting built and all the way here, and then we can figure out how to favor the installation of the year. Just a good thought.
And and then there was one, I think it's still worth two, was was like ninety one thousand. And and that, that one, I can, I can, that, that pushback. And just because that's for installation in the MTUs. And there's no MTUs in it, so I mean, we can, we can get that one, that one pushed back.
Push you back in the billing cycle.
On the end of the game, so. Uh, did that, I believe, on scope of work for, I believe, that they they put on there that it's twelve lots.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I mean, it's, if if, you know, you you saw that next year, we can.
So where you still will this?
Yes. I was actually looking at our, our notice of hearing, just to look at the balances in the, um. Water sewer improvement, and as you can see, there are proposed budget. Um, for twenty three was five hundred and fifty thousand, which we budgeted all of the revenue that was in there. And I don't recall specifically what projects we were looking at that there, but just to give you an idea, there is money in that. Recall specifically what projects we were looking at that there, but just to give you an idea, there is money in that, uh, in that fund. And the emergency depreciation fund had three hundred and ten thousand budgeted, so.
Approval of replacing our loving their water meters. Not to exceed four hundred and five.
How good?
I live down, you can easily prove whatever what's the news go before that. Yeah. We can see that's what you're. If I'm understanding correct.
Yeah, so it's a lot of better experience.
Still, we're a little bit horrible, so. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I was asking about value, right? Not sure.
Soon, yeah, I think there's four forty-six, nine forty-five, that sound great. And they took the that would be at the at the most, uh, it was. We figured, I think, for a hundred and seventy-eight meters on that, and either we can we can buy that, what what's not used or. Uh, you know, allow allow you guys to just put them on your your shelf or for backups. Uh, if one if one goes bad, you'll have that backup. Will replace the one with that under a hundred warranty. Uh, it's just that way you're not waiting for. A warranty meter to arrive, you've had one put in and will replace what you have on your shelf.
Is a warranted item will also be twelve to sixteen weeks. But a warranted item will also be twelve to sixteen weeks, probably, probably more. More because it's just, if you're not involved.
This is what you wanna show.
If and all of it is already done, so all the very expensive part we do here, say we purchased in the last three years. Are done and installed, all we got to do is screw it. Uh, transmitter the way it is.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve utility service company incorporated special work in our form. To replace and install years compatible of the city's previously approved purchase of AMI modules. Um, not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and upon approval verification of funds. By the city administrator.
Now we're shot at this. Also. Councilor Hanson has approved. And Council Johnson has seconded the. Close motion to approve the utility service company scope working order, replace and install water meters compatible with the city's. Previously approved purchase of AMI module scope is worth number one, not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A contingent upon the, um. Confirmation of funds being available by the city administrator. Any further discussion, concerns regarding this, uh, proposal? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? No. All right. Hearing one, all those in favor, uh, the motion has been approved with one objection. So the motion has been carried and very good. All right. On to the next piece here. Department heads, recreation isn't here, um. But probably needs to be mentioned.
Uh, yeah, well, it's. We can, they had an issue, uh, out there, the. I don't know when the exact around where they were referring to where the football field for practice field was at, you know? Where the property do that actually has a final say, I guess, uh, seven, seven.
Which I have.
Who knows, wasn't.
Were they all?
There are just issues with many different people in a certain area there. Where we had kind of figuring out.
Um. The Ida Tower. And the city owns all of that. Um. Even where the, uh, show barn building, I guess, is what you would call it, which was actually built by the county. Um, so the county built the building and they have. On a lease agreement understanding with the city. My understanding, I've not been able to speak with someone who's been able to tell me who built the rodeo grounds. But what I've heard, and I think John maybe has spoken to Sam Lamble, a little bit. Supposedly it was a a similar situation and there's a hundred year lease or something like that, uh, with regard to. That the use of the property and everything else, um. Uh, nobody has a record. Not seen it, so I guess the thought process or our discussion was that somewhere down the line, I think got established, we would initiate conversations about. Drafting one. Um. And getting that, getting that in place, cuz there's a lot of questions that revolve around what space can be used in one camp, maintenance. Um, et cetera, et cetera. It's one of those things that is just always been done that way. I mean, that's the nature of the situation. It's always been done that way. Previous. Administrators, mayors, whatever, I don't even know, but. We have this understanding, so. It's on the agenda. I don't, I mean, if there's something, if it's something that you want to address right away, we can certainly work on that. It's something that I've talked, I mean, I've been aware, we've had discussions. The first time it was brought to my attention was. The week between. Rusty and John, or I don't know. Rusty, there was no city administrator, I know that much, and we talked about it, and then John and I talked about it, and then other stuff obviously came up, and then. We discussed again, and it's just been one of those things that we kept kicking the can down the road until we had a time that we could address it, so if it's something that you guys wanna make a priority, we'll push it right up the ladder, and if it's. Something.
It's been a point intention for at least forty years, so there's a reason to do it right now, but yeah, we need to. We need to have something in writing because our bases is in writing.
Nobody is pretty.
Yeah.
Who's in charge of maintaining that facility? Who's in charge of the liability? Those stands fall down, forty people fall to the ground, who's liable? You know, there's there's signing being ripped ripped down, like, who's gonna pay for that? So there's a lot of questions there, in addition to some frustrations.
Yeah, there's frustration, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, conceivably, they've built it, it's their nature on our property.
Right.
Uh. So.
Like, sounds like it's been good about this required by.
No, 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 yeah.
It's just, it's just everything outside of that, so we've done one contention for.
Oh, yeah, and there is a misunderstanding. I think there was a misunderstanding, or at least from what I've heard, there's been misunderstanding about the loans, exactly what those discussions of. Well, you don't let us use that and you can't drive on our road, yada, yada, and I'm like, man, it's our road. No, I'm just kidding, uh, but I I mean, I don't think anybody ever actually took the time to go back in the register of deeds and see. Who owns what, but it's definitely been at a pressure point since Greg was working as city attorney for a while, so. Um. We can address it for sure, and it's basically gonna be Dustin and Irish count representatives from the South Club and saying, hey, can we agree on something?
Dustin. So that's for right now without a lease agreement in place, is this the liability falling city has been property?
I would say.
Yeah. That was my initial, the rodeo loved it, I was like. I, there are more substantial bleachers that fall, and I was just like, gosh, one of these don't what happens, you know? And then they're rotten, corroded, and there's it's a weak foundation, you know, a lot of people on those bleachers and. Who loses the trouble?
When he comes to liability, it's something I always say is. Everybody, we're all going down, sound what's going down like that. Sorry, I mean, if somebody, if the bleachers fall and people sue, they're gonna sue us all.
Right.
They're gonna take money. Regardless, even if there was a lease agreement, they would do that. I mean, it doesn't.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so recreation, anything else for recreation? Uh, golf course. Not here, street, no, it's not here. Joe, do you have anything else? You're done, okay? Fire department, um. We really didn't have the research. Um. You know, everything that happened this spring. You know, we've gotta really dig down and say, how do we, how do we, where does the fire department fall in the city, you know? I I don't know, there's another one that it it's just things have become tradition, but it became clear that where's our liability? You know, um. And this could take a year or two to really dig down and say, this is the way it needs to be. You know, so I talked to John about it, he really didn't know. So I mean, it's just something that we don't know. We need to figure that out, so, um. Release.
So if you see the three properties that were separate demolition, all three properties were down, I believe the one. The first one that's done on Broadway or Tuesday Park Street is completely done and leveled, the one on St. Louis, I believe, is would be done and leveled. And the final one up on West Street, I'd say it's ninety percent done. There's a couple of small items up there, but I would then. Of course, this week, I would mention that we will, they'll actually completed this week as well. Uh, three arrests, downtown weekend, two made by the city, one by the county, um, DUI is city county. For the most part, relatively evocable, um. Appreciate everybody's, as Sammy said, this is for counties support, uh, citizens of our communities support with their behavior and everything in downtown, everything went off pretty well. So unless there's anything for me that's a lie. Sure, you gave you guys being out of that, yeah, seeing that we're safe, we tried, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, anything else?
I can leave those questions for me, still working on the tip, um. How did we? I don't wanna say we opened the can or so, we opened the can.
Sure.
And it's resulting in some questions, um, as to active boundaries, what's in the, um, et cetera, et cetera. That I've been working with Angela on, and then gonna try to get home, come in and see if we can. Narrow that down. There's an additional questions come up as to properties that people thought were in the tent that. I don't know right now if we showed that they are, so we're we're digging and hopefully I can come back and give you some more information. Next meeting depending on what.
So for sure.
Um, I have been in contact with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Empower, uh, we have set meeting dates where they are going to come talk to employees to explain. Uh, the insurance plans and FSA, HRA does really sit down as they. Were supposed to do last year, but we did not get done, um. So that all employees can understand, ask questions, all that. Affleck's really good about it, she meets with everyone every single year, so we're hoping that Blue Cross Blue Shield and Empower can do the same continually each year to help. Um, employees understand, especially this HRA that's so new to all of us, um, and really what FSA flex spending is, is there are different insurance plans, so. So then, starting in October, we have set meetings that will start picking out to all of our, um, full-time employees so that they can all come in and listen and ask a lot of questions, so.
Everyone's second meeting.
Starting, uh, mid-October will be our first meeting, so.
City administrator, any comments? John, this is your week.
Well, hey, I quick, a couple of quick. Quick things, if that's all right, now let Dustin take over, so, uh, but, uh, back on the water meter deal, just so you know, I did look back on, I I do have the state forms on my computer here. And in the temp note two seventeen, there is two hundred and sixty thousand dollar balance there. My only, I just don't know exactly what projects yet are out of that. The rest of those are all there, so I have no doubt that the money's there. But but Dustin can look at the two seventeen temp note and just see what other projects were funded out of that, so, um. And I just wanna wish Dustin all the best, uh. Uh, certainly, he can call me anytime, and I plan to have some conversations with him over the next couple of days that I was supposed to have today and tomorrow. Unfortunately, uh, other things changed my my plans and, um, just wanna wish him all the best and thank the city council really for. The opportunity to help you guys with the search, um, which turned into the internet administrator gig and something that. That I truly, truly enjoyed and just got a lot, I got more out of it than you guys got out of it, trust me, so really appreciate the, uh, opportunity.
Thank you, John, for helping us. Yeah.
Absolutely, thanks, boss.
Thank you for the opportunity, Council. I'm looking forward to working with.
We're glad to have you, John, you know, thank you for all you've done, I mean, this was a tough year, no doubt about it, a lot of things happened, and, um. You know, you were there for us and we certainly appreciate it, and would like to do some kind of formal. Farewell, I mean, uh, your farewell right now was gonna be most pleasant, um, I know that you're ill, so, um, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors and and. And we just are thankful that you came our way and then produced a great candidate, so, um. You know, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll I'll see you guys down the road.
Yeah, absolutely. City Council, Tyler, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, I, other than that, thanks, John, for what you've done so far, and, uh, good luck to you.
Thank you, Tyler.
What do you have in mind? I I just wanted to thank John again, um, he really saved us in a time of need and. Especially helping with the budget, that was huge help of getting that and setting Dustin up, um, for success that way, um, then just wanted to welcome Dustin and. I mean, I've been very much looking forward to that, should we have some. Landline conversations coming our way.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Eric, you have anything? No. Fire.
Yeah. You're you're doing well, but is Jessica with us? Okay, actually, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I just wanna say thanks to John for all your work, guys, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and then I also think I wanna apologize to the city employees because. We didn't follow this girl on that HRA. And I feel really bad that we we promised you something in switching insurance and. It didn't get done and none of us followed through, so accept our apologies that that shouldn't be something that was followed through and hopefully with Brittany getting this in here, we're getting that remedied and and hopefully it's being taken care of, so you're being reimbursed like we promised, and then. From here on out, we'll go with a natural reimbursement account, so that's it.
Very good, um. My comments are, um. You know, this last weekend was 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 important. I think a lot of important things have just happened. You know, we, when bad things happen, they happen in series, and it's crazy, but, um. When I took this job, I knew there was gonna come a time, I'm just gonna get hit from the left or right and. Gonna get an uppercut, and I think June second, ransomware attack was pretty much. Uh, Rusty left a day or two before, and that happened, and, you know, so I think things are definitely turning around with John's help, oh, the great council. With a great, um. I feel like we made a super choice, um, and then really, Cowtown, I think, was a big deal because meant a lot to a lot of people. And really, that lady that was sitting back there, Tammy Greby, started with a text, probably in. March, I don't want it to die, you know, and I thought, man. You know, what can we do to save this? Let's just put something on this year, and we can get more organized, and maybe twenty twenty-three have a really great. Cowtown Festival, but this year ended up being great, we had a lot of different pieces that we haven't had before, and it just showed if you work together, community, what you can achieve. Everybody in that committee, and we're gonna talk about this in the future, not as friends, they work together, they pull together, but a lot of talent. And it's hard when it's when that's the situation, you know, it's hard when you've got seven or eight leaders and you're trying to produce something, but they did. And I think that I can't promise it, but I think they're gonna become very successful, and I challenge them, it's a success, it's gonna bring another set of challenges to you. Cuz we have a, you know, we're. We have a catalog. We we haven't had a lot of that in the death festival, so it was, it's just been a great few days, and appreciate you coming, uh thank you, John, for his service. To the city, thank you to Aaron for his contribution to downtown, awesome street. Uh dance, and there are people lined up for at least a block. So that was just encouraging, that something could start with, you know, uh. Just a few people, it can grow to something great like that, so I think we're gonna see more of that in the future, and uh. With that said, um I don't believe we need an executive session, so.
Oh, go ahead, forgot. Um. One, I want to thank the mayor for the great job we did as MC downtown, that was, you did an awesome job, busy. Um and the second thing, we need to, we did approve the allocation, or is that celebrations? As she is, we can make sure that's on the next agenda that we get care of that.
Yep. Yeah, well, just I'll see what they're requesting. Does it say celebration request? Okay, cuz I don't think I've received anything for these celebrations from these requests yet, so. She put it on the back of that, and she puts celebration, so she just had the funds that were set, I was one times you budget.
It's the six thousand, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. And celebrations, I think the celebration too sounds separate. Okay. Okay.
They're expecting six thousand, so they made them both. They got an account. So just however you want to do it.
Yeah, that's for the celebrations.
So it's initial, yeah, so. Anything else, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion to you here.
Uh Darcy's been motion adjourned, wait a second, that motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye? Motion here is. The judge has. Thank you, Melissa. It's always so, right?
Oh, yeah.